Hey, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I am, you ready?
Yes.
Great. I'm gonna go ahead and call this September 12th meeting to order. I am India Johnson, Vice President, and I'm sitting in for President Flynn tonight. And first, for our business, if we might have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and please rise for the pedalegits. Thank you, and Director Knight is gonna read our mission statement tonight.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student who graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Director Knight. And so our first item for tonight is Exhibit A, and that will be our STEM Scale Up Awards for 2022-2023 school year. And tonight, we have Erin Sale's district STEM coach. And I don't know the other lady, but you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, this is Callie Williams. She's a third grade teacher at Lou Henry.
Yeah, great. So let me go ahead and get this recommendation on the table. The Board of Education accepts with gratitude the STEM Scale Up Award of nearly 200,000 to provide pre-K and fifth grade computer science instruction as presented. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Erin.
So I'm Erin Sale. I'm the STEM coach for the district. This is my second year in this position. We really just wanted to share, if you got a chance to stop out and see all the things in the lobby, all the amazing materials and resources that we will have our pre-K through fifth grade students with access to. Second through fourth, so second, third, and fourth last year was able to do Lego League in the classroom, all students. And then this year, we're adding on some of the new computer sciences for the other grades. I had noted with House File 2629, just that all students need to have access to the computer sciences, so this is a way that we've been able to build them in for all pre-K through fifth.
Fantastic. So this the first time you guys have applied for this?
So two years ago, it was applied for, Ryan Christopherson and Anjly Meyers had applied for second, third, and fourth to get the Lego League in the classroom, and we received that award. So last year, we implemented that. And then this year, or for last year, I sat down with the team, and we looked at the STEM Scale Up has like a menu of options that you can choose. And so we looked to see what materials and resources would fit in, and we kind of hit that computer sciences standard for the other grades, and applied, hoping that we would get one of the grades covered. And got incredibly lucky enough that every single one of our awards was received the morning that we found out, like I kept getting all the emails. And so, I mean, this is something every building, every pre-K, every kindergarten, first, all these students, all the teachers are getting to participate, so.
Can you give us a rough estimate about what that looks like as far as number? When you say every, so just help us out for those in the public.
Oh, the members.
We can be able to have access to.
Um, how many elementary students do we have in the district?
And pre-K.
And pre-K.
Just rough estimate.
Well, if we're thinking, we've got, some buildings in each grade have 80 to 100 students. So for kindergarten, that in 11 buildings is about.
We have about 100 some kindergarten, so.
So 800 kindergarten and first, and so the kindergarten, first one is Storytime STEM packs, but it's coding. And so, yep, and then second, third, and fourth. Last year, one of the things that was so amazing with getting to do Lego League in the classroom was the year before, when we just had Lego League Explore outside of the school day, we had one second grader that was able to participate, and the others were third and fourth, whereas last year, every single second grader in the district did this, got to participate, received a certificate, got to voice all their learning and share it with people that we brought to the building to be reviewers.
So you have like your own mini.
Our own mini, like, yeah, celebration and expo. And, I mean, to think about that, the second grader who had gotten to participate before is somebody who was in like Talented and Gifted, whereas last year, students that were newcomers, that they don't yet speak English, still get to be super successful in coding because it's not like a language-based, it's there's icon blocks, and they can move it, you can try something out, you can see that it doesn't work and try something new. And that's really what we have with all of these. It's getting to try it out, and Callie said a wonderful thing earlier, she's like, students learn how to fail, and then it's okay, and we try something else and continue on.
Right.
So, I don't know if you want it, Callie was able to implement this in the classroom last year with her third grade students, and did a phenomenal job, and then is gonna actually coach one of our challenge teams at Lou Henry after school. If you want to talk about just the experience with your students last year?
Yes, like Erin said, I, we all had an opportunity to teach this with our students. We were nervous at first because it was my first time ever doing anything with Lego League, but it was pretty seamless. There was slides that we got to use that Erin took right from our guides, and we got to follow it day to day, and our students were so invested. The level of engagement was incredible because everyone had a part, everyone had a role, and that goes with the Lego and the structure too. There's specific roles for each student in a group to partake in, so they get to pick. The teamwork and the conversations that were happening with each little team in our classroom was just phenomenal. It's all authentic, they're working on those problem-solving skills, even negotiation skills between each other with other teams, and it was just a phenomenal experience, really. Looking forward to the challenge team too. They're a little nervous, but really excited for it as well.
So how many sets of materials do you have for your classroom, and how many students did you have?
I had five sets and about 25. So we, our goal was about four to six kids in each team.
And is that the strategy for the district?
Yes.
So right now, we have a set of materials that we saw out here covering all grades?
So what is out there is one of the kits for this year's theme, the Superpowered, and so each one of those kits, every third grade classroom will have roughly five. As a district, we ordered 200. So we have 200 of that kit, and then there's an additional Spike Kit, which has like the motor and the things that they can use to power. And we got 200 more of those, along with the 214, I believe, that we had from last year. And so those are dispersed out to each of the third grades across the district based on like their enrollment numbers, but I did it so that every classroom would have enough if they wanted teams of four, that they could have teams of four.
And how about fourth grade?
So this year, fourth grade and third grade will share the Superpowered sets. Second grade will keep last year's Cargo Connect sets, and then third grade will retain the Superpowered sets in those Spike Kits, and then next year, ideally, what we'd be looking at is purchasing next year's theme that fourth grade would keep. So that a second grader last year does the Cargo Connect theme, this year does the Superpowered theme, and then as a fourth grade, it would do next year's theme. So we are like reusing the kits each year. The Spike Kits, then, once we have those, those can just be reused every single year. And so should we decide down the road or have the availability to get other themes, we wouldn't have to replace Spike Kits.
So will every grade have a coding experience?
Yes.
So you, 200 per grade, so you need 1,200 sets.
If we, well, we would need just like 600, so we just need 200 more next year.
And the year after that?
Not unless we wanted to purchase the new themes, or we could continue having second grade do the Cargo Connect, third do the Superpowered, and fourth grade do the.
All right, help me understand the math.
Yep.
200 sets for third grade.
Yep, 200 sets for second grade last year, third grade this year has another 200 sets.
So are we planning 400 sets we have?
Yep. We currently have, yep, just over 400. I think we had 214 last year that came with the award. And then next year, if we got 200 more sets for fourth grade, then we would have 600 total sets.
And how about second grade and first grade and?
So second grade still has their Cargo Connect ones that they had, and then kindergarten, pre-K kindergarten, and first and fifth don't do the Lego League in the classroom, theirs is a different resource or program. It's just second, third, and fourth that have the Lego League.
But those do, they do do programming.
They do do programming.
The pre-K even is programmed.
That's what I'm asking about.
Yes, but those, those materials are separate, and those ones, part of the reason why we selected those was the cost to continue with them is incredibly minimal, like replacing batteries. So the Cubetto coding robot that's out there that we saw for pre-K, all that is, is three batteries and the little Cubetto guy, and three batteries in the board, and that's all that has to be replaced.
Do we have 200 boards for those classes?
We, each teacher has a Cubetto board and the cube in pre-K, along with some of the other materials that came with their Tiny Techies award that they can use.
So you don't have groups of five in kindergarten?
No, so the way the Cubetto is laid out is that as a whole grade level class, there's a story that goes with it, they go through it as a class, and then it moves to, it can be something smaller groups do, along with some of the other materials they have, like they have pixel boards, there's a binary tree that shows them that coding and everything isn't just like a linear thing, there's other materials that came with that one.
Okay, so my question really is, if you look at pre-K through five?
Yes.
All right. Do we have half the number of total sets, whatever they may be, that we will ultimately need? Where are we on the?
We have everything we need. The only thing that we would need next year is if we wanted third and fourth to not share their Lego League stuff. Other than that, we have everything you need.
And then, and did the district, was it all covered by the 200,000?
Mm-hmm. Yep, last year, the stuff we had for second grade last year was covered by last year's Scale Up Award. And then the pre-K, K1 and 5, this year was all covered by this year's Scale Up Award that we received. And then Esser, we applied for Esser funds for the Lego League for third and fourth this year, and received Esser funds to pay for that.
How many challenger, is that what it's called? It's not Lego League anymore, the ones.
Explore, it's in the classroom, yes.
Yes, how many of those do we have?
200 of this year's theme, and like 214 of last year's theme.
And so the kids though, that, are we not doing any out of the classroom this year? It's next year, is that?
So Explore, we're not doing any of like the Explore, the juniors of what it was if you're outside in the classroom, but we are doing challenge teams, and then still the FTC and the FRC outside.
So challenge teams is for?
That's the big Lego award, yep.
And that's fourth and fifth?
Fourth and fifth.
Okay, and anybody can do that, right? Like, we're trying to?
We're, yeah, we're really, yep, we're working, I think with all our students being able to participate in the classroom, I think we're gonna really pique the interest, and with all these teachers that are able to also teach it and get a chance to dive into what Lego League is and get comfortable with it, we're hopefully ideally gonna get some more challenge teachers, our coaches, after school, which is like what we have with Callie, who did it last year in the classroom and was phenomenal, and decided, yep, I'm gonna coach an after-school team as well. And so we've talked a lot with Dick, who does the FRC and FTC, and how this is going to build up his numbers as well, and just continue as they get into the middle school and the high school.
So how is the initial training provided and funded, and how is the, I suppose there's some ongoing training every year as things change, right?
Yep, so with the Scale Up Awards, the training is a part of that. And so kindergarten, first grade teachers received a stipend to do a three-hour virtual training this summer. Same with fifth grade, and pre-K had a full day in-person training that they received a stipend for, so the training is all covered. As far as sustaining the training, last year, before second and third grade, all implemented the Lego League. I met with every individual team, because we go over, here's the resources, here's the layout and how to do it, and then I'm available as support to go into the classrooms. We'll do the same thing, so starting tomorrow morning, I meet with Cunningham Third Grade, and we'll go over, here's the new resources, and here's all the materials we have. The way Lego League has it, like they've got a team meeting guide, and so I turned the team meeting guide into something a little more teacher-friendly with like a unit snapshot of what everything is, and Google Slides that are much like what teachers are already creating for literacy and for math, so they have all the resources right at their fingertips, and then I just go through with them.
Okay, one last question, maybe.
Yeah.
Is there a specific, are there specific curriculum objectives, and what is the evaluation process for competency?
So we have like the computer science standards that are out now, so we're really basing it off of what, what in those resources is meeting those standards. I don't have them currently with me, but many of the resources list off, here's the standards that by doing this, this is what you're meeting. Last year was Lego League, the only one that we so far experienced full through. At the end of it, they have the expo, and so part of that is having reviewers come in, and it's the reviewers then that are really checking the fidelity of what happened, what the students learned, because the teams are presenting, here's what we did with our model, here's the coding that we did, here's what we learned about the core values, and then those teams then received awards, and those reviewing sheets went back to the teachers.
I do have one last question, it's for Callie. What would you do differently? How would you improve it, or how are you going to improve it this next year, and what resources, in addition to what you already have, would be needed to make this a perfect curriculum?
Well, to improve it, I know it would be beneficial to continue to have a kit in every single grade, that way students aren't repeating what they've done in the year prior. That way, something new, keep engagement up, have them looking forward to something. I know last year, because it was new, and just with all the things that happened at the end of the year, I know classroom time felt short, but it won't be that way. This year, we will have a larger amount of time allotted to get through our lessons. We were still successful, we made all our objectives. And then some, like my students for example, we did, ours was Cargo Connect, we met all our objectives with that, and then I let my students go and use the Spike Kits more, and they built even more things with those kits. And so this year, I'm looking forward to just more time to dedicate with them, and they're already so excited, they see the boxes in the halls, and they are asking me every single day when they can get the Legos out, so I'm really excited again. I know our teachers are too.
So with coaching, are the tables now provided? I mean, I know we always got them mapped, but like the physical tables, are you gonna have everything you need for when you're coaching?
So when she does her challenge team outside of the school?
Yeah.
Yes, she will have the table, and we have a number of tables within the district, and then we also have four that we keep stored for when we host our qualifier event. And so she would have the table, and then John Dear provides grants to receive like the new kits and materials, and so all of our outside of the school day coaches apply for that, that grant, to receive what materials they can, whether they're a rookie, a rookie team like hers will be, or an existing team that just needs the new updated kit for after school, so.
I think this is very important, because you know, the reading, writing, arithmetic isn't outdated, but coding is now, I think, up there equally important, so.
And I think it's important that we're actually paying a stipend that's, because when I coached, it was $1,000, and Callie, it's how much now?
$18.
Yeah, so, because it is, I mean, it's a huge commitment. It's, you know, September through, they go to state through the end of January, so I think we're gonna get more teacher interest, and especially because, like Callie, you got, you were able to feel like you were comfortable doing it, and then getting to that place, because I was terrified of coding, so. And also having a son who ended up doing like computer science management information systems, if he had had these things, starting in kindergarten, I think that college would have been a lot easier for him. So I'm just so excited you did this, and the amount of money you got out of, it was like $500,000 available, you said?
For the Northeast Iowa like region, and when I had talked to Jeff Benneke, who's the hub manager at UNI, he said, yeah, we got about half of it. So it's pretty, I mean, yeah, it's pretty amazing. And even what you said, like, that's the feedback we get from teachers, is there's a student that maybe is like super quiet, and they can't quite like get what he's super into, these come out, and the coding comes out, and all of a sudden, it's like, here we go, this is what, this is what you like, like, we can find something for everybody, and that's what we're seeing, so.
And congratulations.
Definitely, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's really huge, that's huge, so. All right, so all those in favor of, wait, do you have any additional questions? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, well, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you very much, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
And I'm gonna come visit.
All right, our next item that we have is a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, and I think our superintendent's going to talk about this one, so let me go ahead and get this recommendation on the table. That the Board of Education, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude this donation in the amount of 4,600 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2022-2023 Youth Emergency Fund as presented.
Some move, second.
Thank you. All right. Aster, Erin.
Thank you.
So Lyle, you're gonna have to go easy on me on this one, okay? Because when this came up, I met with Pam, I meet with Pam every Friday before board meetings, and I was like, Pam, tell me a little bit about this, because this is new to me. So my understanding is that each year, this is a very common grant that's given, or amount of money that's given to different schools, just in like, kind of goes through the counseling departments or the family support workers, when they identify emergencies within their student body, just getting certain supplies or whatever it might be for those families. They go back and they ask for these amounts, which are not much, there might be a breakdown of the different amounts in the packet. So it's really up to the principal's discretion if we hear from the principal saying through their filters that there are needs within their buildings to ask for that money. Kind of like if they, if it's not being spent, they probably won't ask for it, which is probably a good thing, that it's not meaning to be spent, but if it does pop up, then they'll come and ask. Again, it's not a huge amount, it's the 4,600, but again, this is a pretty common thing that we have done on an emergency basis.
And it does make, I mean, it may not seem like a lot, but $200 to a school that needs to get those supplies, it is critical. So I'm very appreciative that the McElroy Trust is able to do this for us when we need it.
It's pretty helpful. I mean, there have been a lot of situations in the district for families, and they're able to step in and help at just little cost, which is great, so thank you very much for McElroy for this, this is fantastic. Any additional questions?
I could add that it does, it's a fluid relationship with McElroy. At least two more times this year, we will look at the balances and replenish the ones that need it, so it's not a one-time-and-done issue, it's a really a per-need-by-building relationship that we have with McElroy, so they've been very faithful at doing this for years.
And all the schools?
Is that replenished with new money?
Yes.
And at some point, all schools will have some money. All right, sounds good. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed?
All right, motion carrying. All right, Exhibit Set C is our next item, and we, this will be a donation from Mercy One, which is fantastic. And here we have Amy Mehe. All right. While she comes up, we'll go ahead and put the recommendation on the table. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the donation of a used Zoll M Series cardiac monitor, value at $5,000 from the Mercy One for use at the Waterloo Career Center as presented.
Some move. Second.
Thank you. All right, Amy, tell us what the Zoll M cardiac monitor would be.
So I'm just learning a lot myself.
All right.
I'm in conversation with my instructor, allow students to be able to take, give out this situation, this scenario, to be able to process and pass information along and prepare that to a hospital. So it's giving them opportunity to really be able to reflect upon what they're arriving on in a situation, and then prepare that report for the paramedic.
What specific course is this?
So this is EMT, our EMR, EMT courses, so this really is up and going for the first year this year. We hired our instructor halfway through the year last year. We currently have eight students between those two programs enrolled and in classes.
And you don't have one of these currently?
We do not.
Very good.
I just have to ask, was it unexpected, or, I mean?
I think it was something that he was seeking, and an opportunity came about.
Fantastic, that's wonderful. He'll be great, he'll be great in the classroom. Any additional questions?
I can tell you, the kids are very excited about this, and I'm excited to see the kids and the numbers continuously to grow since it is fairly new, so.
Can I challenge you to send us pictures, but I'm curious to see what it looks like?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Do that, and then when they start driving in the paramedic back end and stuff like that, second semester, with their clinical time, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so all those in favor to approve this donation, which is fantastic? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, motion carrying, thank you, Amy. You're welcome. Eight, so next exhibit is Exhibit B, and this is information only. We have a summer school update. Dr. Morhan, could you give us some numbers and how summer school was this past year?
Yep, I'm gonna start by having Jen Hartman and Laura Meyer come up, we're just gonna talk in chronological order, they're gonna talk about elementary. Ross Bauer was chosen to talk about our middle school summer school, and I think Mike Penning and Trent Donovan are gonna talk about high school. I also emailed this PowerPoint, we, since Pam's not here, we just fell apart, so we don't know how to get it, but, see, it's true, full transparency, but you also, but you also have this, yep, it's the same one that I emailed to all of you as well. And I can resend it to you if you need to, what they're gonna talk through. Just mainly highlighting the attendance, things that students worked on, maybe some pros and some challenges that we faced.
So just to get started, good evening, I hope everybody is well. It's a beautiful day outside, so it's always fun to get to talk to you guys, knowing that you give us so much of your time. I'm just gonna head out some of our elementary mission and annual pieces that we had. So we worked really hard to get as many of what would typically be considered bubble kits into Summer Academy as we could, so we were looking at those kids, we're about 75%, and we actually focused on math when we did that, and then after we got through that first round, we went ahead and opened it up. We really wanted to work on fluency and math proficiency. I have to thank Erin, who I know is left, but this STEM work that she brought in for our kids to do all summer long at each of our sessions was phenomenal. Like she did training with all the teachers, she just made sure that they could really work on that coding stuff, and so those were big pieces we really looked at, and then our other focus was really around collaboration, and just making sure that our kids were okay socially, emotionally, because what we have noticed in this past year, and I know you guys have noticed that too, because we've had conversations, is that whole working together piece is something that we've had to really relearn. And so we really focused in Summer Academy on how do you do that, especially with people that you maybe haven't been to the same school with, and so that was one of our big focuses as we moved through, and we looked at those pieces. Jen, did I forget anything on that part so far? Okay. We did have four sites, so we were at Highland, Lincoln Lowell, and Irving, I was like, forget my own school. We served quite a few kids, we were really like hoping for about 450. We ended up falling just a little bit short of that, because there's a ton of amazing programs that happened all summer long, and we did have some parents who would come back and they say, listen, I really appreciate that you invited my kids, but I already had them doing two other programs, and I don't feel like that's fair to you guys, because I heard you say you need my kid there every day. And we're like, yes, we do. So you know what, thank you for reaching out and saying that to us, so then we could reach out to another family. One thing that really helped us with our attendance was we worked with Durham closely to have them tell us where kids should go, so if they had a homeschool who was one of the sites, they came to the homeschool, but then Durham's like, okay, listen, from your other schools, they would go here, so that we could try to keep those routes as tight as possible, and help them pick up as many kids and bring them to the sites as possible in a timely manner. So those were huge pieces for us. The other part of our why, we know during the summer slide is a real thing, and I'll be honest, we had like two weeks at the end of the school year and two weeks at the end of the summer, where we saw immense movement in scores from kids in both their math and their fluency scores when they came in. So we know how important it is to just have them stay with us and keep that instruction going, and most kids, we were able to pick those, pick those back up and keep them moving, and we were also able to pair with the Boys and Girls Club, so all of our students who accessed the Boys and Girls Club during Summer Academy were still able to go the last three weeks of summer at no cost. And so those partnerships were really key to us, because that allowed the parents a place for their kids to go where they knew they were still gonna have access to people and materials, and keep them engaged in doing, doing all the things that we had done so far, so that was really awesome. We, of course, haven't seen our fall scores come in yet, because most of our teachers right now are doing their initial testing on kids, but I know by next week, a lot of the schools will be done, so we will be able to look at the effectiveness of the kids who attended, and then. So we would be able to look at the effectiveness of the kids who attended, um, and then had those three weeks and now have come back to us, so those were the pieces we really worked on. Um, one thing that was probably really different is we invited kids first by their math scores this year. And one of the reasons that we did that was because we know that the Bridges Intervention Program is a solid piece, but we hadn't had a chance to do any work with it yet. And so that allowed our teachers to work with that with kids that we knew had some needs in some areas, and we were able to see some pieces move along really quickly with that, and also have like forty staff members who now feel very well-versed in the use of the intervention materials for the school year. And so that was really valuable to us as well. So as you look at those numbers, um, our total enrollment, enrollment at beginning that came was three hundred and fifty-one at our four sites. Um, as I said, we were hoping for around four fifty, but we settled, um, to keep that moving. Uh, majority of the program was two sixty-one, as I said, we had some other summer opportunities that came up that we wanted kids to go and take care of. But that put those kids underneath the seventy-five percent figure that we go through, uh, so eighty-four percent of our kids attended seventy-five percent or better. Um, as they went through and sixty-four kids had perfect attendance for the whole program. Then as we looked at what happened as far as, uh, progress goes, I was really thrilled and I know that Jen was thrilled as well, and I know Dr. Mor- Morhan was the same thing. We grouped kids by math, but we were able to do flexible grouping with our fluency pieces and our literacy pieces. Ninety-five percent of our kids either remained proficient or increased their score, and ninety-two percent of our kids exhibited growth on their fluency scores with literacy. So even though we did not group them by that need, we still were able to reach those high numbers, which felt really good, uh, for everybody as we were working. And then the, it was the first time using our interventions program and there was a few little hiccups with that, but I think we figured a lot of pieces out. We started off with a really big idea that every teacher would take their class through, through module, two modules in the intervention program. What we discovered is we got started with it, that some of those modules took a little bit more time than others, and so we're like, okay, everybody goes through one and they pre-test and they post-test on one, if you get to the other, great, right? But let's not stress about a new material that you're using with your students. Um, eighty-nine percent of the kids in the program remained proficient or increased their score, um, and six percent, um, of those kids who were not a part of that were because they were already proficient when they came in, so it just happened to be the module that they already had lots of skills in. Uh, but the teacher did try to pick one that was best for the whole grade level, um, that was one thing we worked with Ryan Kristoffer to take care of. And then seventy-six percent of our students exhibited growth and it was, um, way more than we anticipated, so it's accelerated growth. We would have people who would go from zero or fourteen percent all the way into the seventies or the eighties. And so one thing we do know about that is that that program is, is well-done and our students were able to respond to it appropriately, and our teachers were able to use that in ways that were helpful. The final little caveat with elementary, um, our STEM connections between Lego League, um, and the ISU Extension Office were amazing. We had guests in every Monday who would did extension activities with the students, um, so that they could train up their staff to use in schools. And then the other three days, uh, Erin trained all our teachers on doing Lego League with them, and it was really fun to watch, um, first graders who had never coded before work as a team, do the color things on the robot and have the arms swinging around on those, because they would get so excited with that piece. Uh, we also were able to work with the food corps to come in and work at all the school gardens, um, within three of the grade levels. Um, and so they got to try out different foods, they got to do lessons, they got to take care of the things that were outside. And then, um, just the feedback from our parents, they loved that we had the transportation. The Boys and Girls Club at their site that continued after our program ended, I think was a big community piece for them and they were really thankful for that. Um, and then they just talked about how their kids felt super engaged, um, with the staff and with all the people who are working with them, so those things were really positive and powerful.
Any questions?
Could you expand a little bit more on what, uh, they did in the garden mode and what they, what they learned and what they physically did?
So a lot of them tended to the gardens outside, because we were at that point of time where they were producing, and I know a lot of kids also took things home. And so they would actually get to go through and talk about like, when you weed it, what does it look like, when it's ready and ripe, what does that look like? Because most of our kids throughout the school year, they don't get to experience that, because it's too early. And so they got to try different foods and things that normally aren't ready during the school year for them to try, uh, like ground cherries, which was a new one for me, I didn't even know ground cherries existed, but we have them at Irving, and so I got to learn, um, all about how you actually husk ground cherries. And they now have then been teaching that to our kids right now, who are in session with us right now, cause I mentioned to Brandon, who's the new food for guy, um, about how I didn't even know that we had this, um, this bearing plant, um, on our grounds, because it actually wasn't a part of what they planted at the garden. So a lot of care, a lot of pruning, and then a lot of knowledge about fruits and vegetables as they come into play in June and July.
So who's actually responsible for these food?
The food, the food corps takes care of it, so they have people who work at our sites during the summer and they are the same people who come in during the school year. So, uh, right now, we have, um, we get, uh, fruits or vegetables from them every Thursday at the elementary level. And then they also come in and do, uh, grade level lessons, um, in addition to sometimes being present at lunch, uh, where they get, bring things in for kids to try that are not necessarily prepackaged. So lots of times they'll prepackage cauliflower, mangoes, apples, um, my favorite one was like starfruit, because kids are like, what is this? You know, they think it's a decoration and it's actually food, but if they haven't had it before, they don't know. And so the kids actually got to see how a lot of that worked in the summer versus getting their package and then having someone show them the video, right? You know, because in their, this school year, they don't get to see a lot of that in action.
Thank you. Once again, it looks like you, looks like and sounds like you guys did an awesome job this summer, uh, I have two questions. Um, how are the elementary schools, um, chosen to host the summer school and then do you have a percentage, uh, of students that rode the bus uh, to there, you talked earlier about, uh, transportation against students there, so the young percentage of students that rode the bus?
One hundred, one hundred percent were offered, Aster, and I can, I can get that number for you, I don't have it, cause I didn't even think about that, but that is uh, absolutely a, a number that I would find valuable in your guys' situation, so I will get that and I will send it out to you. And then Jen, if you wanna talk about sites?
So in the past, we've had more sites than this year, we've had, we have four this year, and a lot of that was due to the number of teachers and pairs that were available to help teach, we had a lower number this year, everybody was exhausted. So a huge thanks to our staff that took on summer school, we have really, really, um, folks that just love that summertime learning with kids, and so huge thanks to them. Um, and so this year, we wanted to just make sure that we had, this is our last year of our Twenty-Fourth Century Grant, which is a requirement that we for sure have to serve Irving and Lowell students, but I think you've heard me say my philosophy since I've been here is all kids deserve it. So, we, we just picked sites that we felt we could open up, um, and have easy access for busing and transportation and so forth, and then get kids to the Boys and Girls Club, so we're hoping for even more next year, back to the six is what we would like.
Sure, thank you.
Just to note, when you argue the numbers regarding the busing, could you just also get the numbers of how many buses that were involved with Durham? Just, I'm just curious to know that too.
Yes, absolutely, I just wanna thank you guys too from our staff, um, in building, there was a lot of things that went into like making that happen at four sites, and we just really appreciate you guys being open and loving to do its best for kids in those moments, because I know the custodial staff had to be really inventive with cleaning, and so there was a lot of conversations um, with Marty and with Randy, and they were phenomenal, but, uh, we just really appreciate you guys supporting us, because we are seeing the gains of that, um, even as we come back this year.
Well, we thank you guys for all that you do.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is so, my son, when he was like, um, when he was in third grade, he threatened the bottom night, kiss him down. And he did summer school and it, it, it helped tremendously, but it was so different then, it was just, the buses came and got it, but at lunch, it was done. So having all these extra pieces, um, to keep the kids engaged. I can't tell you how, how much that would have done for him, so knowing that the kids are getting that.
And, and sending our kids to the Boys and Girls Club, and I know that that was a whole other route that Durham had to make, but I went to each site for the Boys and Girls Club and seeing the kids in that element, being able to play with each other, um, in a setting that was meant for those sort of activities was amazing and the kids loved it, like, they're, they were so excited to go, in fact, um, just a little funny, uh, one kid decided to tell his mom that he could go without going to Summer Academy. And so I go to the site, because I knew him, and of course, I see him in the gym and I'm like, over here. And his mom's like, well, but he said, and I go, no, he has to come, right? If he doesn't come, he doesn't go to Boys and Girls Club, and she's like, I'm so sorry.
You gotta help me out. Check out the garden by Lowell, if you go out to Washington this way, rather than going the back way, just look to your right and you'll see a really nice tree that says at Lowell.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
At middle school. Good evening, everyone. You hear me okay? I'm gonna start off by thanking Laura for letting us borrow her computer, because I was going to present from my phone, which would've worked, but I'm at the mercy of Pam tonight too, apparently. Uh, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the middle school team, and I do just wanna point out that, um, Tom and Zach and Josh are all here tonight, uh, I think to support me or to make sure that I say everything correctly, or both, thank you, truly thank you for being here, guys. Um, and I have to thank Cora Turner and Tricia Gannfield, um, and, uh, Brian Orkman as well. Uh, Tricia and Cora were, were the leads for summer school, uh, for the whole staff, and they did a really, really good job. And we got a couple of years working with them, so we were able to build on some of the things from last year. And then Brian Orkman came in and provided some administrative support as well, so, thanks to him. And there's too many teachers and support staff to thank, but overall, uh, we had a really good group of teachers and support staff this year. So I will summarize everything, but before I do, just know, summer school for middle school this past year looked very similar to the year before in a lot of ways, structurally. Uh, we did host at Hoover again this year, uh, with in-person attendance, um, that online instruction primarily delivered through that edgenuity program. Uh, there was a tremendous amount of parent communication and check-in each day from the teachers and, uh, from the leadership there. Uh, transportation was provided by Durham again, apologies, I don't know how many routes we ran or how many students we transported, but, um, it was partnered with Durham, of course.
What did their date, I'm sorry, their day look like, like what, were, did they, was it a half-day or was it full for them?
Yep, so it ran for three weeks for half-days.
Okay.
Um, starting in, uh, second week of June, and then they had the week of, the first week of July off, and they came back for the second session of three weeks for half-days. Um, and then we had again, teachers, interventionists, we had a counselor on staff, the nurses, just tried to make sure that we had all the supports we would have in a typical school day available to all of the students from all four middle schools. Um, so identifying the students again, we looked at their core classes, literacy, science, social studies and math, and if students had to earn two or more Fs, um, they were assigned and required to attend summer school. Uh, we did have two hundred and seventy-six students total across all four middle schools. Um, and just, I don't have all the comparisons from the year before, but that was down from three hundred and seventy-four the year before. Probably worth noting, uh, the year before, we were working with a lot of students who had been virtual, um, throughout the year, and we'd hate to say it, it's still kind of a tough subject, but we, we had maintained the contact from the building level that we would've wanted to, so I think, I think in getting many of the students back into the building, that was probably, in my opinion, the biggest variable that knocked that number down significantly. Um, and then two hundred and fifty-three of the two hundred and seventy-six students attended somewhere along the way, um, so we did have a handful of non-attenders, but the majority did attend at least partially, hundred and forty-five of the two hundred and seventy-six students completed, and that's fifty-three percent. Um, I did reference the number, bear with me here, I did have something up on my phone to make sure I was saying this correctly. That percentage, um, was up from, uh, forty-nine point eight percent the year before, so not where we want it to be, of course, but an improvement over the year before in terms of the number of students who completed. Um, and the students had to complete, um, oh, I'm gonna say this wrong, they had two courses and they had to complete, somebody help me, eighty percent? Eighty percent of the course at eighty percent, okay, it's as easy as that, I wanted to make sure, so eighty percent of the course completed at eighty percent proficiency, and that's for both classes. Um, so there at the end is the twenty-three students, eight point three percent who did not attend at all. Um, and there were some students who we were continuously trying to track down as summer school was going on, we being the people who were working in the building and us back at the building, um, uh, the building principals, just trying to make sure we knew where all our students were. Some had moved, some, um, just we hadn't been able to make contact with, but the majority did attend. So the performance, um, we had eighty sixth graders total, ninety-five seventh graders and a hundred and one eighth graders who were enrolled. Uh, forty-one of the eighty-sixth graders finished, fifty of the ninety-five seventh graders and fifty-five of the hundred and one eighth graders, so pretty similar completion percentages across the board, across the grade levels. So again, kind of similar to what we did last year, we, we didn't retain students this year, uh, we did promote students on. Uh, but we are being very deliberate at the building level about ensuring that we are still holding the students accountable for the learning that we expected of them from summer, um, so.
Is there any kind of intervention that's happening with the, I mean, Dr. Morhan, is there something different, are they being pulled or anything, since they?
That's what Ross is talking, gonna talk about.
Okay, sorry.
That's good, uh, so.
I get so excited, sorry.
So you, you said you did not retain any, even if they did not attend summer school?
We did not, and there was a slightly different response for the eighth grade, the students who were in eighth grade this past summer than the sixth and the seventh graders. Um, but, I mean, that was a collaborative decision that we didn't retain, but we knew that we had to respond, of course, and part of it is to hold the students accountable for the, the learning that they were supposed to have, uh, that was supposed to take place in the summer in those edgenuity classes, so actually starting next week, um, we are, we are continuing what we did last year with after-school programming, and we are going to require the students who didn't finish to stay after school, um, and we do have fortunately staff who are willing to, to stay and work with the students in that capacity. Uh, we do have the activity buses set up to help get the students transported. Um, we're, we're going to emulate in a lot of ways the summer school experience in a much condensed after-school version of things. Um, so that's part of the response, um, but then some of the things that we're doing in, in the building, so there's probably been a lot of conversation around MTSS and as a system, not as a time of the day. That's something that we're trying to tap into at the, at the building level with the students who were in summer school who didn't meet the expectations, and quite honestly, some of the students who still met the expectations because they still had shown a need for summer school, so we're very aware of the students in our buildings who are in summer school and that they need something more, because even if they finished, we don't, we didn't want them there in the first place, because it showed some sort of academic need or some sort of need. Um, so the MTSS systems in our buildings where we're identifying the standards that the students have to know, assessing them more frequently and making sure that we're intervening as quickly as possible, so that we have fewer students who need the summer school intervention, if you will. Um, so that's one piece of the puzzle, um, more creative scheduling, and I'm gonna, if I'm not careful, I'm gonna ramble, so I'm gonna keep myself as focused as possible. But one of the things I'm really excited about at the building level, Sharice Orman, as the Secondary Curriculum Director, is helping us really align a lot of things, especially within literacy and math, so that MTSS process can be more effective. I do have to give a shout-out to Ryan Kristoffer too, who is trying to build some things vertically and, and hand us some really good information as middle school principals and staff of our incoming fifth graders. So, again, I, this isn't the topic, but just know that he is, he's working with us to give us some clarity around what the students coming in need, so that we can meet them faster, and not be so reactive, especially with sixth graders as they come into the middle schools.
That's one of my questions also, I asked, have we, do we identify any kids that are in the, say, meeting the our median requirements for a lower percentile of trying to jumpstart them into their middle school experience, like a fifth grader who's in that lower percentile, but still beating, you know, the fresh old, but trying to, they pull him into summer school, so they have a better start to that.
Kind of trying to do like a jumpstart thing?
Yeah, same thing by going into high school, kind of to help, if they're struggling before they come in, it's, or you're really low on it, they could very easily up cross.
We, we've talked about that, one of, I mean, full transparency, one of the hardest things is getting teachers in the summertime. Our teachers are exhausted, so it's not, um, any fault of theirs, but this time, I mean, even for summer school this year, we have less teachers willing to teach summer school than they have in the past. That's why you'll notice, we'll, we did the three weeks and then the week off during Fourth of July, because that works for families and teachers to give them a little break and then three weeks. Just trying to be more creative on how we're delivering summer school, so we can get, cause of course, the more staff we have, the more kids that we can serve and the more creative we can get with how we're serving kids.
And I ask like, I'm sorry, what kind of compensation they get for summer?
They get their, they get their per diem, so their hourly pay. So I know that for elementary, they have incentive, kinda like to go to the Boys and Girls Club. What's the incentive for a middle school? I know, I mean, I, I like carrots, I like treats, like, I want some. I know, I mean, I I like carrots, I like treats, like I want something and it can't always be a great, so what's the incentive? Or had that been discussed for middle school to?
They did, they did during the day.
They did.
Uh I would say Cora was great about that because that was what she thought about. So it wasn't Boys and Girls Club, I guess, I just jumped in and just.
No, you're right. Though uh Cora actually pushed us as middle school principals to get um external incentives. We get, we had a lot of gift cards and every time a student completed a class, um they earned a gift card and when they completed summer school, they got um slightly bigger incentive. Um just a, and it did, it did keep a lot of the kids engaged. And uh Cora and the entire staff did a really good job of celebrating the students and making it very public.
They got their picture taken, they came to the office, it was a huge deal. I mean, it was a big celebration.
They sent nice, I think this was new this year, they made certificates to send home to the students um for completion. So just trying to make sure that we're patting them on the back and and keeping them motivated.
I have a question about the retention or non-retention. So if a student, just say eighth grader, uh didn't remain in the district after their eighth grade summer that they didn't complete, what what does that look like? What type of communication or is there any communication for that student, you know, with them not being in the district anymore?
So let me touch on the eighth grade quickly here because that was kind of the, what I was just describing was sixth and seventh grade and then I'll come back to to actually answer your question, I promise. But the eighth graders, I do have to um thank Kerry Whelan too. Uh he actually sat down with the middle school principals and Dr. Mohorn and we went through uh really student by student, building by building. And looked at the data and he did a good job of preparing some of that ahead of time for us, um some trend data so that we could make decisions about how to help support the students that. And then we're coming back to our buildings, so essentially the the students either were enrolled in Bridges, the Bridges Program at Expo, um Expo High School. Or the PBDA at East or West. I think we all agreed to promote them on into the comprehensive high schools without some significant supports. That's such a big time in their lives, so um I don't wanna misspeak here, Dr. Mohorn, if I say this incorrectly, but if a student transfers out of the district. I believe it's that the district in which they enroll's decision about how to move that student on or not. But we would communicate to them, we did, we actually had one in our building and we just said, here's what the outcome was, here's what our next move would have been. So um that's the summarization of of our responses for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um that's all the information I have for you.
I just wanna make one comment. I had a chance to sit um with the, with Stephanie, Cora, um to look at the data they collected. I could not have been more impressed with the data and I'm just speaking about the middle school because I had a chance to sit with that group, but like. Came away very impressed by how like student by student their data was focused. And I I gave that feedback to Stephanie and Cora, um just really impressed by the work that they that they did. So I just wanna double down on that fact that you don't see that everywhere, everywhere all the time, Ben. You don't see that level of detail uh in terms of like holding students accountable to to being there and to completing the work. So I just wanna put that on there for you guys.
I wish we could somehow um sweeten the pot to get our staff to want to work in the summer. Um I don't know if that's something that we can discuss or think about or, I don't know, just something. I even if it's not huge, but you know, the gift cards for kids, let's give some to our staff, you know, just something to, I don't know, make it. Make it worth their while because it is, I I can't imagine after the years, we, these couple of years. Having the energy and this and and this funk that you need to come in every day to make sure it's exciting and keep these kids engaged, so. Thank you to all the teachers that did it.
Does summer school staff need to be certified?
Yes.
Because.
They're teaching our certified subjects or just like scripts during the year, we wouldn't have a math teacher that's not a certified math teacher.
With the way it's set up, with the with the weeks, can subs do it then or no?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they could do the whole time because it's not.
I believe, I do believe so. We, they, they generally don't, they're not jumping, jumping up and down to do that, but. I mean, we do, I will, I will say for middle school, we do have a core group of summer school teachers who have still come back year after year. Um and have just really knocked it out of the park for our kids and I do, I appreciate that because I know that has to be exhausting to not have even a little break. But we do have, especially at the middle school, we do have a a core group that teach year after year.
So what are your accommodations for improvement for next year?
I think one of our goals, and I think I can speak for all of us, is to continue to try to minimize the number of students who are required to attend summer school for obvious reasons. Um I actually remember thinking, thinking about this and talking about this last year, about a year ago, that our middle school summer school, it is really um meant to recover any of that learning. In those two subject areas that the students earn those Fs. Um we have not really crossed, crossed over or turned a corner into something that may make it more engaging otherwise. And that's just the harsh reality for me right now and I think there's a lot of challenges that we have to figure out before we can still turn that corner. Because the numbers are still higher than we want them to be, though they're reduced, they're still higher than we want them to be. And even though we have a small but consistent and I would say mighty core group of staff who have signed up to teach summer school. I I we're not getting long lines and more people than we know what to do with. Um so I don't really have a good answer for that, Lyle, other than to continue to try to minimize the number of students who have to go. And then hopefully, if we can, if we can continue to do that, maybe we can start to have that conversation about making it something more like what elementary is doing in some ways. But maybe that's not, sorry, I just, maybe that's not cool because these are middle schoolers. Maybe they don't, maybe they don't wanna go to summer school because it's not fun anymore. I don't know. But I'd still be interested in providing that opportunity.
So between ten and fifteen percent that qualify for summer school?
So I know I I saw in the elementary one, thank you for adding that, the IEP kids um were included, is that the same with middle school as well that are five oh four IEP? Okay, and do we have um pairs? Do you have enough?
Okay. That's.
I mean, not enough, but you have some.
Yeah, I I actually think we had a good number this year of pairs.
We did. We had instructional strategists to help support students with IEPs.
Okay.
It's it's open to all, we don't turn anybody.
Great.
That's awesome.
That's more maybe just a question of what is, you know, Ross mentioned about trying to get kids so they don't have to attend. Uh interesting question, do we, do we study data on, based on kids getting failing grades, based on just not understanding material versus not turning in material? Where's, it's not a, it's not a learning issue versus a effort type of issue?
We've talked about that, that's why I said we're Sharice, because we have talked about um we're on the road to standards-based grading. Yep. Because that that's, I mean, that's what it should be about, that it's not like a responsibility, it's a, you're graded on the standard and meet your ability to meet the standard. And so we won't let Sharice talk because she'll probably talk very loud, power, to be fair, but yes, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're moving towards.
Get away from this, they have twenty assignments.
Right, you got, you got Bs on all your assessments, but you didn't turn assignments and so we punished you and you have an F. And that's really what we're working to move away from because that's not what it's about. If the, we, if the student meets the standard, they meet the standard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob or Wes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. High school?
All right, good evening, I'm Mike Pennin, the PBA coordinator at uh East High School.
I'm Trent Donovan, the PBA coordinator at West High School.
And kinda like the middle school, uh a lot of the things that we did this year were very similar to last year as well and and like then we have a. A good group of core summer school teachers that come back each year and uh help us out and they're, they're really good, high, high-energy, really good at building relationships and do the best they can to to get students engaged. Uh we do not send them to the Boys and Girls Club or anything like that as well. And I guess the only care we offer is to get that credit and get close to graduation. So uh we we could do better at coming up some things for that, but in the right now, it's uh not what we have done, I suppose. So as I said, a lot of things are the same, students are using edgenuity, uh and we use the same schedule as as last year. Where last year, we bumped it up to uh the nine weeks minus the week of July fourth. So essentially, because last year, once again, coming up off of COVID and things, we had a lot of a huge need of recouping credits and stuff. So we went through the process of extending those, those weeks off and so we kept it the same way because we're still seeing that extreme need of credits needed to be re-earned. So we did the nine weeks in the summer school except for the July fourth, it's eight to noon, um Monday through Friday as well. Um a couple of things that were different this year is last year, we provided bussing uh June, July and August. And this year, we did just just provide bussing for June and July. Uh and then this year, we also just did in-person summer school as well. Last year, if you remember, we did a couple of hours each morning as well with an online to kinda wrap up the ends of our virtual school, which was a lot bigger previous year than this year as well.
Did we feed them or anything?
Sure, so they each got a snack and something to drink, you know, that we provided about halfway through and gave them a break. They got about a fifteen-minute break, depending on the day and depending on individuals. Some individuals didn't use it, they were pretty dedicated, wanted to get it. Some kids, you gotta chase to run the building a little bit to get back to their room, but uh yeah, they got, they got a snack and a drink as well.
Um I wanna think, Sharice, my my daughter did some credit acceleration and so she did help and she got to come home with like. When you talk about celebrating, she thought it was amazing. I mean, she's sixteen years old, she still thought that was adorable. So like those things matter and looking at what you were able to accomplish was with credits that were recovered. I mean, it's huge and how many kids graduated, fourteen and um so twenty-six? I mean, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, I really am.
That's amazing.
There, you know, we get kids that, you know, didn't come at all during the regular school and then we reached out to them and they came back. They were fifth-year students, came back just for summer school and saw some of their old teachers and, all right, I'm ready to do this, you know, and that. If we didn't have this, they, you know, they would just kind of go on with their lives and not not get that diploma. So it's, it's neat and you know, from from secretary of staff to the coordinators, to our counselors, everybody, to administration, everybody does a really nice job of reaching out and doing their part to reconnect with these kids. And the parents and let them know that, yeah, your kid can tell you that they have six credits, but they're still gonna be a freshman next year, they're not, they're not a sophomore, you know. So we kinda get through those, those debunks, you know, we get through those things and and we we really let them know that it's important that they're there and, you know, hopefully give them that incentive to to move on to the next grade. Uh so the people that were targeted, some of, some of these are really obvious, obviously seniors that didn't reach their, reach their graduation requirements. Uh ninth to eleventh graders that were already taking an online class. We have a lot of kids in either PBDA or in the credit recovery classrooms that for whatever reason, they don't get done with those classes. Or some of them even know that we have summer school, right? So they know that we have a month left of school, I'm not gonna get these two credits done, right? But I know I'm, I'm prepared to go to summer school, so I I can start these credits and use the, you know, five weeks of summer school to get, get those done too. So I think that's another way we we get more credits too for people that are behind, um students that were behind in credits already. Uh students that didn't earn their credit in their traditional class second semester, you know, those are kind of hard to reach out to prior to. We do our best of trying to catch those and just kinda looking through infinite campus and catching those, you know, talking to teachers of people that are prospectively not gonna pass those classes. But we have to do kind of, you know, do some damage control at the end of those semesters to to reach those kids that, you know, kinda probably surprised that they didn't pass their traditional class second semester. And then, as you brought up, we have uh, I I would say, especially this year, was a smaller amount of acceleration classes going on. And usually that is tied to like our IB program, they just don't have enough class time in a day to get through some of these core classes to allow them to take the IB program as well.
I'm so impressed that you go after the kids who are gonna fail that that course in the traditional classroom because, I mean, that's something that I don't think I wouldn't have thought of. You know, it's obvious that we do, but that's so important and to make sure that they stay on 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 track. Um thank you.
Yeah, right, especially you like to think if you catch them now, they take the same class in the summer, that stuff should be, if they sat through it for most of the semester, that stuff is more fresh than coming back and trying to do it after the summer too. So yeah, that's one of the things we've been doing.
How many students and how many staff were involved in the high school program?
Okay, so it's on the kind of slides here, so typically, both East and West, I guess at East, I can speak for East, we had seven teachers to start. And uh we had about two hundred and thirty kids probably register and I'm I'm not on the slide yet, so I'll I'll get there quick and skip over Expo and we'll come back to Expo, don't, don't get mad. But uh so we had about two hundred and thirty kids register and about a hundred and fifty-five students show up at least once. Um and that's, that's what even making phone calls on a daily basis from teachers and and the coordinators and and sending connect ed calls and stuff too. So a lot of times, I think the kid just signs up, fills out that form or even the parents fills out that form and, you know, yeah, I'm signing up for summer school and for whatever reason, there's a disconnect actually getting them to show up. Um so at East, let's just go through the data here, at East, we had a hundred and two was kind of our high, high water level as far as the students in one given day. Um and then that decreases throughout the summer, obviously, because either kids earned their credits, they graduated, whatever the case may be. They earned two credits and don't have time to finish the last two or three that are on their edgenuity count, whatever the case may be. So you can see our averages there, average, June average seventy-four, July average forty-one, August average twenty-three. And we, we cut our staff and and to be fair, this is probably the first year where I didn't have to like have that conversation with, hey, we don't need you next week. Because as uh Dr. Mohorn said, our staff is pretty burnt out by then and they're kinda telling me, hey, we have family vacations this week. And so it just kinda works out really well this year, where didn't have to tell anybody they weren't needed, just kinda they went away at the right time, you know, and we still were able to serve our our students as well too. So we started with seven and kinda as as the, as the attendance drops, we we cut down classrooms. And we also have instructional strategists to help out with IEP students and and things as well.
Do you have a breakdown of like ninth to eleven in the number of seniors you had?
I do not have that. Uh I would say, oh, as far as all our online stuff, it's it's higher at the higher level. So juniors and seniors, well, summer school would be sophomores and juniors because the seniors hopefully would have already graduated, right? So junior, sophomore and junior are heavy, you know, because we don't have, we don't have a ton of freshmen taking online classes at this time. So those would be people that just failed their class.
And how much of the loss was due to maybe just the students working? Was that ever considered just, you know, because that's gonna, you know, we have a lot of students who work during the summer and that schedule may not work out.
Sure, absolutely, and we we definitely had kids that said, hey, I'm gonna have that that virtual time or, you know, we're gonna have something in the evenings. Like if you remember last year, all the year, we had like a seven to nine virtual time slot, right? So some kids were looking for that and we, we didn't really pursue that a whole lot because we were worried about staffing. I don't know if, you know, too many people seven to nine in the summer, they would be worried about, you know, helping out doing that, right? So that was something that some kids definitely thought about and to be fair, there's no like, you come at eight, if you're not there by eight, you gotta go home. Or if you have to work at ten, right, you stay till nine-thirty, we'll get you out of there, right? So there was a lot of kids that would, would just come in before or after work or get there while they could as well.
And we also are exploring, um last spring, we did some, some trying with um doing some virtual options after school. And we're collecting the data right now to see how many credits were earned, how many kids, what we're really looking at is how many kids were behind in credits, credit deficient. But after we did that, now we're on track with our cohort. And if we found that that really made an impact, then we would look at implementing that again during the school year and doing some, some Saturdays, some after-school. Cause we could do virtually and just providing more options for kids to make up those credits.
It seems like springtime, there might be, it might be opportune because kids realize that, oh, I don't finish up, I'm not gonna walk in summer, you know, they might bite on that. Just if they, especially if it's a special class that they may manage to miss on like the fall, first semester.
Yep, we really try to put out whatever we can that's gonna accommodate kids, whether they're working, whether they have to stay at home with siblings, you know, just different things. We try to really figure out whatever we can for kids.
Seems like you get more attendance in the spring than you would in the fall, do something like that, you know, you know, just by.
But I always say, even if we only get a certain amount in the fall, you know, even if we can get ten kids at East and there's a teacher, then then we'll do that. If ten more kids earn credits or get on with our cohort, I think it's worth doing.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we definitely saw an uptick in the spring and I'll be honest, we definitely saw, I can think of at least one student for sure that wouldn't have graduated without, without having those virtual after-hours from seven to nine. So it was, it was, it was good that we had staff that stepped up and did that and then it was really, really good for those students that took advantage of that as well, so. Uh as far as credits go for East, we earned a hundred and sixty-six credits and that's based off of eighty-four students that earned credits. And coming from last year, we were about a hundred and forty-two, I think, so we did earn more credits than last year, which is, which is good. And then, as mentioned, we had seven graduates, five fourth-year graduates and two fifth-year graduates as well. graduates as well.
And although that might not seem like a lot, that's a really big deal.
It is. I mean, one really is.
That's great. Yep, that is, absolutely.
Then we'll jump back on the slide and go to the Expo data here quick. And Expo's a little bit different. They just do it in June. So any Expo student that does not finish out in June, they can choose either one of the other traditional high schools to go to. So we each pick up some, starting in July. And I don't wanna call it session anymore because people get confused that, "Oh, I signed up for the second session of July," or "Second session of summer school." And that was kind of bigger when we weren't running the whole summer. But, so they come that July, that July time with us, and they get pro-bussing and stuff, and that kind of, that stuff is provided as well. So they had, I don't know how many people they had registered. I wasn't, I didn't have that information, but sixty-eight students showed up at least once, and their daily average was somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five. And they had eighty-six credits earned by forty students in that month of June. And they also had seven graduates as well. Then I will let Trent talk about West here.
Sure, yeah, I would echo a lot of the things that Mr. Penning just said, as far as attendance. And over the course of the summer, it would decline because students are earning their credits. So we saw a whole bunch of students the first two weeks come in, and they might have only had one class on their edgenuity that they needed to finish. So they signed up for summer school, got that class done, got out of there to enjoy their summer. So that would be a carrot for them. And I think a lot of our students fell into that category of, "I only have two tests I need to get done. I'm gonna come to summer school for one or two days, knock that out, and enjoy the rest of my summer." So we had two-hundred-and-fifty-three students attend at least once. Our high attendance was a hundred-and-twenty-nine, and again, that was during the first week. It decreased throughout the summer as people finished their courses. And what we would do is we would sit down every Friday and figure out our staffing needs. So we started with nine staff the first week, and each Friday, we would sit down and figure out, you know, what does our average attendance per teacher look like? And then we tried to keep that hovering just over twenty. And if it supported dropping a teacher, we had that conversation. At West High, we do have a core group of summer school teachers. And fortunate enough for us that we have a lot of the students attend in June. We also have a lot of staff that want to work in June, but not July and August. So this year was really easy for me because every time I needed to cut a teacher, I actually had a teacher say, "I don't wanna come back next week." So it did make things really easy. We averaged eighty-seven in June for students, forty-six in July, and then in August, we dropped down to twenty-six. And we were pretty consistent on our students. One thing I will say, and I appreciate that we're allowed to do summer school, is a lot of our teachers and students end up with us again the next year. And it's just a junk piece on that relationship building. Especially in June, a lot of our summer school teachers are PBA teachers that are just gonna finish June. And a lot of our students are PBA students, like Mr. Penning said, that just didn't finish. So they're able to continue those relationships. The students are comfortable with those teachers. They come in in June, finish what they need to. Same thing in August, you know, around August, we're kind of finalizing the PBDA rosters, and a lot of those students are in summer school. So it's a good chance for the coordinators and even the staff that are in PBA to continue building that. And this first couple of weeks of school has just been kind of a continuation for those students where they know what to expect, and they're earning great progress already in their PBDA classes for this school year. There were three-hundred-and-eight credits earned by a hundred-and-sixty-one students. We had twelve graduates, ten were fourth-years, and two were fifth-year.
Again, because I like this number, but to have twenty-six graduates just because of summer school, that's huge. So I just wanna say I appreciate, I know the middle school team left, but elementary, middle and high, because it all contributes, you know? The high school, they get to see the end result and the kids graduating, but it takes a village and they have to start somewhere and end up graduating. And if it weren't for this team working and supporting kids, we couldn't get our kids graduated and out in society. So I appreciate very much, as you do you all, just the work that they do for summer school.
Thank you.
Every summer.
Do they, the graduates, like, do we do anything for them when they finish?
We make it a huge deal. A lot of them, you know, are kind of bummed that they didn't get to walk and things, you know? But it's, you know, they're really excited. I think, you know, just seeing how we're excited for them and, you know, kind of sit down and have that, talk about what their next plans are. It's kind of, they all, like, I would say of the seven East High ones, I think four of them already rolled their cows already and stuff. So it's kind of like, so it's kind of neat to sit down and talk about, "Hey, what's going on next?" Well, that's really good, that fits right in. You did the WCC courses that helped out with that. And, you know, so other than, you know, just kind of having that relationship at the end of it, you know, kind of that final culminating, you know, meeting and talk, you know, there's no fanfare. Maybe we can get it, I guess, on email or something, or something we need to do. But, yeah, there's, at that point, you know, there's no one really around to...
Dr. Smith, I think you need to send some cards.
Yeah. Or no cards.
I mean, it could be something like a virtual thing we'd done during the COVID years, where at least we put something on the website that recognizes the kids, and we said their name and stuff, and that might be, I mean, not the same walking, but it's a recognition of the accomplishment.
I will add, at West High, our counselor lives close, and obviously, a lot of administrators are in the building, so we walk them down. Because we work so closely with the seniors, we know kind of ahead of time when they're getting close. So a lot of our seniors actually got handed their diploma as soon as they were done. So that was a big deal to them, to see physically, "You are done. Here's your diploma." And we obviously say goodbye, and they have a good time. So because we have administrators in the building, because of that, it's nice to kind of walk them through the admin hallway and say, "Look, they got it, and they have it in their hand," which helped, I think, a lot of them have a good experience with finishing their high school career.
Particularly senior, do we do anything, a whole lot with the counseling piece for someone who don't have a plan leaving school? Like, give them an option, like, what they might be able to do now or done? I mean, try to close that gap, "Okay, you're done, but where are you going next?"
Sure, I think that's a conversation we have with them, obviously, and, you know, we had those conversations with seniors for years, you know? But I think that has been done prior to the summer school part of things, right? You know, through previous meetings with the council and stuff, right? So I think they've had that prep and that guidance done to them, not done to them, given to them prior to that last day they earn their last credit during summer school.
And as long as they've earned their credits before the first day of school, they can be considered a graduate for that year, with that. And so, and there is some that work up until that, so.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, you guys.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Mohorn, for everything. Reading through this was, it was so helpful, and every page just made me happy. So thank you for putting that together, too.
But they, this team did a ton of work, and so I definitely have to give them credit.
All right, we are now moving on to information from individuals and delegations. And do we have anybody who'd like to come to the mic and speak? All right, as you make your way up, and we'll go ahead and say that this is an opportunity for those who wish to address the school board and may do so. Please keep your comments for, comments to three minutes or less. I will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal to trying to help our students. Please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we provide this opportunity for public comments, but it's generally not a back-and-forth discussion, so especially if items that are not on the agenda. At time, we'll try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our board meetings, agenda items. With that said, I invite you to go ahead and say what you have to say. Just go ahead and say it's your name and where your student at.
Hi, my name is India Franklin, and I go to Expo Alternative Learning Center. I would like to talk about the school dress code.
Please.
Okay. Our uniform has been khaki pants and any color collared shirt throughout many school years. As the world begins to grow in many creative ways, one of my main problems is our school dress code. Fashion has been acknowledged to all 2022, and our students feel we should be able to create a fashion, as fashion be... Fashion has been acknowledged to all 2022, and our students feel we should be able to be creative as fashion begins to grow. I read the dress code rules, and of course, there are many pros and cons. One con being the fact that us girls are getting sexualized about our bodies just because of our clothes fit us. And another con is wearing the sweat, is the wearing of sweatshirts, shoes, and other accessories like that. We feel that our administrators interrupt our class time just because our clothing doesn't fit school requirements. We feel as though the dress code should be changed and relaxed, so our students could feel respected and allowed to express ourselves appropriately throughout fashion choices to certain, to a certain extent, and respected, and, um, and respected so our students could express themselves freely. I would like to appreciate the school district for hearing, not only me, but other students as well. Thank you for your time and understanding and listening to your students' population.
Thank you, India.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Can I ask just one question? Did you do this survey, hon?
I didn't get the survey in my email.
Dr. Smith, did you hear that?
I didn't get the survey in my email. It did get sent to me to another student just today, but I didn't get a chance to work through it.
Did you help something to give to Pam? Did you give a petition or anything?
Yes.
Okay. You could give this to Dr. Mohorn, he can give it to us. That would be great. We appreciate it. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, do we have anybody else who'd like to come to the mic? All right, fantastic. All right. Now we are moving on to our consent agenda. All right, we have three items on the consent agenda tonight. We have Exhibit E, which is minutes of the August twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two regular and special board meetings. F is the frank personnel appointments and adjustments. And G for bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Do we have any items that we would like to pull?
Item F.
Item F, okay. Anything else? All right, so E and G, I'm gonna go ahead and place those and get a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second.
All right, great. So personnel adjustments, I will go ahead and read the recommendation for that real quick.
When you approve the consent?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. We, can I go ahead and approve the consent items E and G? Can I motion about approving?
Yes, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, motion carried, approving E and G. Now we'll move to F, personnel and appointments adjustments. The recommendation, the superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, fly off, okay?
Yeah, I'm just interested in the general update. I see that there's quite a few certified or classified staff that we've hired. No certified staff. I think we're still maybe looking for a few on the certified side. Could you just kind of give us an update where we stand, particularly in light of current enrollment?
We're looking for more than a few on the certified side. So that really hasn't changed much since the last update we gave. We do have one certified teacher that will probably be coming forward on the next board agenda, was someone who moved into our community from another state and was able to get a teaching license here in Iowa, and we hired for one of our elementary vacancies. So we do have our eye on a few people, a few graduates that semester that we may be able to hire and place. But in regard to the rest of our certified positions, that's probably not gonna change much between now and after December, when we get potential winter grads applying for positions here.
So we're covering that by long-term subs or by?
Several different things.
Combining classes or?
So in some cases, like the long-term sub may be filling in to help with that. At the elementary level, it could mean that we didn't or weren't able to reach our target class sizes. In some cases, we've had to move some teachers from more special programs like title or perhaps some coaches in different areas back into classrooms. So it's kind of a, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, is it, is it normal to have this many, like, resignations at this point in the year? I can't remember from last year.
I asked the same question, Stacy.
You know, I'm not sure how to answer that, since this is my first school year here, but, you know, given the size of our district, in terms of like classified staff, that does not seem out of the norm for parapositions or other general hourly positions.
There was a few of them, you know, they had to leave absence, so that was just, you know, so that's probably half of them there or something.
Yeah, and a lot of times, those are leave of absences that could have been going on for
Yeah.
six months to a year, and then they've decided that they're not going to come back or are not able to come back this new year.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Some of those, we had to kind of wait till after the school year started to be able to determine whether or not they were going to come back.
We lost a lot of coaches.
He did.
Well, too, with baseball, softball, so that season just got over, so that would be, so, you got what? This is girls soccer, that's a spring sport, so.
Turnover with assistant coaches, I would say, is pretty common, for whatever reason.
Are we the same for special needs that we're still in need?
For, like, associates, well, associates and teachers, yes, yes. But we are having some level of success filling some of the, I say associates, because that's what they're called in my last, it's changed everywhere I've been, so, Paris. Yeah, we are having a level of, some level of success in hiring more Paris that some think may be due to the changes in pay rate that were put in place last year.
All right, anything else regarding personnel? All right, again, both all in favor of approving personnel items? Stay aye.
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 Both opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, next on our exhibit would be, agenda would be the technology purchase. Matt O'Brien got some stuff for us. If he comes down. There you go. All right, let me go ahead and read this. The superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the purchase of the VX rail system and a related component from Dell at a total cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thirty-four dollars. Thank you. Hi, Matt.
Hello, good evening.
Thank you for waiting.
You bet.
What do we have today?
So much of...
Oh, sorry, I should get a motion. Sorry. Let me get it on the table. Thank you. All right, go ahead, sorry.
No worries.
Appreciate that.
Much of the district's data and applications that we host is actually hosted up in the cloud, meaning on various providers. But we also do host a chunk of data and applications on our network in the district's data center. So most of that data and applications are hosted on, I'll try not to get too technical on it all, but it's called server virtualization, which basically means in the old days, you would have like a single piece of equipment, a server, that had one role, so it was running just a single operating system. And in server virtualization, one physical server, so one of those actual appliances, can run...
And in server virtualization, uh one physical server, so one of those actual appliances can run multiple servers. So it's um kind of a different collection of hardware that allows us to be both more cost efficient, provides for better redundancies, meaning if something breaks or a component breaks, it's less likely to cause downtime because we have some more redundancy built into the system, um those type of things. So the district's current server virtualization infrastructure, so the infrastructure, the devices that run that that I mentioned, um those components are between seven and eight years old and gonna be end of life this year. So we've been working on uh looking at different options for the replacement of that setup. And the uh agenda item before you tonight is the recommendation to replace those items. So I did wanna just point out um that the purchase does include five years uh worth of warranty of software components of uh maintenance and software updates. Um, so that will actually allow us, because we're kind of bundling that all under the purchase, um that there'll be a cost avoidance of around twenty-six thousand dollars of software maintenance that we're currently paying uh on a yearly basis throughout those five years. So one hundred and thirty thousand dollars of expenditure for all the new equipment, um but built into that is some software licenses that we otherwise would have had to purchase separately, um that would have cost around twenty-six thousand, if that makes sense, over the five years. How many people did I lose?
So will this cover the whole district?
Correct, yep. This is infrastructure in our technology facility that that really powers various applications and data for the entire district, yep.
So is this a competitive field? You said you looked at other alternatives. Are there viable alternatives or?
Um, there are several. So there there's there's several players. Um, we have a relationship with Dell, so we primarily looked at Dell. That said, we went through prob- I think this was the fourth iteration of a quote even with Dell before we were happy with both the numbers and the um pieces of the configuration that that we were um getting back from them.
So what data are we talking about? Student records, financial uh uh personnel, what are we talking about?
Um, little bits of that, so just to give some examples, um our our authentication system, which is called Active Directory, basically the the accounts that run all of our computers, that's hosted on a virtual network. So anywhere from that to the district's library automation system like Media Card Catalog. Um, the district's Tableau, which is our virtualization uh kind of visualization software for student data is hosted. So um several other examples as well, but just to kind of give you the the plethora, it really is a quite a few different applications that we host on that.
So will we have one and a backup just in case?
Yeah, so we the backups is a is a long topic. Um, so we don't have like a hot failover where all of a sudden like this infrastructure is exactly replicated. Um, we do backups, actually we do a double backup of the actual data itself. Um, so I guess two ways to look at backups. One is that just the components of this, a number of them are redundant, right? So like the power supplies, there's multiple power supplies. If one fails, this system is still alive. We in this system can actually lose a whole server and still fail over and still have all of our data because the way that the the system is structured. So um there's quite a bit of redundancy built into the system. Um, really like high-end organizations, not common to school districts, but like, you know, can't afford downtime. It would be common for them to have a whole replicated setup of this one hundred and thirty thousand dollars as well. We don't have that level. We have kind of the redundancy built into the system and then we have the backup, two levels of backups of the actual data that we do.
Any other questions?
You're satisfied with the uh security of this, what we're purchasing?
Uh, you all know that I could uh talk about security for some time. So what's before you right now is is software that that we've used before and obviously hardware replacement. So there's obviously some security components in it that we need to keep up with those software updates. So like the maintenance that I mentioned, to make sure that we're getting the software patches and updates, that's really important. Um, otherwise, we have other layers of security that also run on top of this solution as well. And in fact, this solution um actually runs some of our security components too, so it's kind of a a bidirectional piece, if that makes sense.
Will public vote tomorrow affect the school district one way or another?
Uh, that's also a very uh long topic. The short answer is not initially directly, however, we so the just in case you all aren't aware, what Lyle's referring to is there's a referendum for the city of Waterloo uh tomorrow for bond issuance to fund an expansion of the city's fiber network. Um, with the intention that fiber would also then be offered eventually, um kind of along the lines of what CFU offers to residential consumers, um the Waterloo would form its own utility that then could offer um internet service. So two ways, two pieces that that would potentially affect us. One is just having another internet service provider. We have two contracts with internet service providers right now. So potentially if that uh was formed, we would look forward to hopefully another bid from the city with that piece. Uh, the second piece, which we've actually been in contact with the city, and I actually have a meeting with um their consultants again this Friday, I believe. Um, just looking at some redundancies with the fiber that connects all of our schools. Um, we have that solution in place right now that's provided by MediaCom, so just looking at um if the city is gonna have a fiber network um that is close by to our schools. Um, does that make sense to for us to partner with them to get some redundant fiber into our our schools on the city's network? So that's that's the other piece which is still um kind of part and yet it's not directly part of anything they're doing tomorrow, but is definitely related. So it's um something we're having active conversations with them on.
You use a red redundant, so does that mean we currently have fiber to all?
We currently have fiber to all of our facilities, uh with the exception of like our storage side or, you know, a couple of um s- uh locations that we don't use too much. It's actually provided by MediaCom, so the district doesn't own that fiber other than, uh for example, we have fiber in the ground between here and Lowell or, you know, Hoover and Lou Henry, W C- W C C Central, that type of thing.
But we don't have any capacity issues at the moment?
Correct. So it's actually what's called dark fiber, which means that they provide the fiber and we light it. So the speed, um the capacity is actually up to us with the equipment that that we use to light it. So um that would certainly be something that if we were to either have redundancy or look at transitioning over, that would be something that would um be a necessity for us.
Thank you.
You bet.
Sounds good. Anything else? Alright, thank you, Matt. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So let's go ahead and approve this um recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, Matt. Alright, that's the end of our agenda items. Next, um is superintendent report.
Okay, I got four updates for you guys tonight, and I believe three of these, I've been pretty kept keeping you updated, Adam. Um, first is enrollment. Right now, I just had, I checked at the end of the day, end of the day today. Our current enrollment as it is today is nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six students. Hey, guys, I believe I messaged you guys with this information. Uh, last year at this time was approximately ten thousand one hundred students. So we are down a little bit. Um, we did have lengthy, two lengthy meetings last week. One with a with our student services department and two with our focusing really on our high school students that are not attending at this point. So we are kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach to trying to get those kids back and to the the ones that appear to be missing that we just haven't been able to see yet. Um, trying to get those kids back. Um, I do believe, I don't have final numbers. I asked for them today and we just you're probably gonna need to give me a couple of weeks, but our open enrollment numbers do seem to be up. Um, so that's something to dig into a little bit more as we get the final numbers. So a little bit down, but I do feel like we are doing all we can in the buildings to get those students back. And I do expect that number to rise above ten thousand by the time uh count comes in October.
When is that, Michael?
October first.
Is it October first?
Yeah. Yeah, I think they have to. Who's in seats on October first is is what it is. So I'll continue to keep you guys updated. I know that's high on our priority list. Obviously, it directly impacts funding. And then obviously, we just want to make sure every student is accounted for.
So is this nine eight seven six? Is that an actual twisters in the seats?
Number of, yes. That's the number I I always.
Doesn't include open enrollment?
Uh, it's a number of kid. My understanding is it's a number of kids in seats.
Okay.
So kids who have opened or rolled out, who have not attended our our school are not counted in that.
Alright.
Did pre-K get counted or no? Did you? Okay.
Second update is just, hey, we've got three different projects that we're working on right now. Um, the West High Gym is the one that we talked about. Um, still, every I've basically said, Zach, I want, and we need updates like every day or every couple of days. So looks like progress is being made. It's still looking like like October first is going to be the day when we're done. Um, West Weight Room, my understanding, I saw some stuff on social media, West Weight Room is done. Uh, looks really nice. They're in their lifting.
This week, I think.
Outstanding. East Weight Room will be done next week. They've laid the floor. I'd look at Zach's notes. Um, but it the projects are on pay, are are where they're supposed to be.
Always I know, I think my kid, my kids are both from Strangest, they were in there, so. In the rest weight room, so.
And we haven't started on the east parking lot, correct? What is that?
I don't have the.
I thought that was October.
Ah, yes.
It was October, I think.
Start of October.
Let me see if I can get an answer for the next three months here.
Sure, no problem.
Is the.
I thought they were doing around conference time, maybe whenever they have a PD day and a no school day and there's a conference.
That sounds about right.
Oh, is that right there?
Oh, yay! Hey, I was just texting you.
Yes, so they actually started on the parking lot today. So we're we're doing it in phases and Joe Parker and Tim Moses have both been a part of the conversation with the phasing, but they are, right now, they're doing the north phasing. And then they'll split into, when they're done with that, they'll do the south part, not the parking lot.
And we're talking about the east part, the east side part of that, not the west parking lot of?
Correct.
Yeah, west part was already done, correct?
Correct, the north, yeah, the north parking lot's done.
Okay.
Yep.
One of the two is already done, so.
Yes.
How long do you expect that to take?
So the they're finished up the ADA ramp on that number eight door, which will be um end of November is what we're looking like for a date for the whole project to be completed. So they'll actually do the, like I said, the north first phase and then the south second phase. And then they'll do the ADA ADA ramp and stairs on that same parking lot location. Which will be the south entrance.
I ask my question, is the east parking lot?
Yes.
When will that be available for cars?
It'll be December, the first week in December is when that'll be ready.
It's gonna be out of commission for?
No, that's where they'll do phasing. So three weeks will be this first first phase that that north parking lot will be um not be able to be used. So then after that third week, so they'll complete that phase and then allow parking to happen there and they'll start on the south end. So really, yeah, the parking lot will be done middle of November, the whole parking lot. Then they'll work on the ADA ramp the third week in November.
So the north will be out for the next three weeks?
Yep.
And after that, then, for the next three weeks, will be the east?
Will be the south part of it.
That's east to me.
This is the southeast, I would say.
The Miller Gym entrance.
Yes, it'll be the north. And I've got the layout I can give, share with you guys.
The triangle, triangle by then.
Yes, yep.
So that'll be out of commission in about three weeks.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Hey, Zach, I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
I'm hiding back.
I guess, yeah. Hey, uh, dress code, though for uh can I've sent you guys an update via email of where we're at. We have got forty-four hundred responses. Thanks for um Stacy for bringing it to our attention that we didn't have students included. We sent that out. We extended the survey deadline. Thirteen hundred students have responded. So we've got really good feed, I mean, really a large number of feedback. I sent you the updates in terms of where the numbers are at. Our first committee meeting is actually next Tuesday. And we've got, I'm looking at it right now, we've got twenty-seven people on the committee, a nice cross-section of staff, administrators, parents. Um, and we were actually having it, it's gonna be um, we've got outside consultant, I guess you could say, coming in to run that, those meetings.
Did you get any students on there? I know I I had messaged you that after you sent the list.
Yeah, we had the recommendation to have this president, the president of the the student vice president of East and West. I did not, I'm looking at the.
I haven't pulled it up.
Sure, I Pam would be, I probably have to hand that off to Pam. Pam would probably know whether or not. I know we had that on the list.
Where you, where are you meeting? Where's the meeting in?
We're gonna meet in here. Yep, next Tuesday at six o'clock, so that'd be the first of a series of four meetings.
Um, will will they then be the ones looking at the bulk of um the going through the the information that came from the survey? Or is that being put together or beforehand, or how is that happening?
Yeah, we're gonna summarize that. I mean, it's not a massive survey, I mean, it's not a complicated survey, but we'll summarize that for the group to look at.
Okay.
Um.
Will we see that though?
The the results?
Yes.
Absolutely, yep, I can give that to you guys.
Okay.
Absolutely, yep.
So just for public knowledge, what is the purpose of the committee that's going to be meeting four times begin next Tuesday? What are you hoping, where's your goal?
Yep, so I want them to, the the hope is that they would look at the data that we've collected. Also, they all bring different perspectives from different positions. I I want to be a mesh of like qualitative versus quantitative. So meaning like, look at the data, but also what are you hearing from your perspectives? Uh, the consultant's gonna take them through a process where not only do we look at the data, bring perspectives, but also like, what's the next steps? What does this mean? And if it does mean changes, then what does that look like? Like, again, we've talked about this at length, like, is it, do we get really, there's a couple of schools of thoughts. Do you get really scripted on what that looks like if you make changes, if you loosen, I guess the the route would either be keep it as is or loosen it up? Do you get really prescriptive on what that should look like, or some districts kind of make it more subjective? Where it's a little bit more administrative discretion. So I wanna talk through that as a group, like, what would make the most sense? There's also gonna be a series of feedback too. So what I picture is the committee putting together some ideas and then going to our administrators and saying, hey, how does this look? Feedback. I know we were also bringing this to you guys.
The policy committee?
Policy committee to take a look at. So I wanna be clear, this is not just a, we let the committee go and make all the decisions and boom, this is it. I think there's gonna be a series of feedback um from a couple of different uh groups to make sure we're all on the same page.
Think we need to make sure that some students aren't added on the the list. I don't see any on the on the list.
And um you need to include expo as well, not just East and West. I'm sorry, I'll rephrase that. Please include expo.
Okay, I will write that down right now. The fourth thing I had was, I just wanna comment on the East High Hall of Fame ceremony last Thursday. Really, really impressed. You know, we had the East High Hall of Fame when I was at East and it was at East High, I mean, we did a good job. I felt like this was six, seven, eight years ago. But Tim, Dan, Joe have really stepped up the, I mean, it was really just a nice ceremony, things uh over at the W C C. Want to remind you guys, a couple of events coming up this week. It is West High Homecoming. So a lot, a lot of events coming up this week, which is always fun, uh parade, all that stuff, the coronation. And then also, don't forget, Thursday night is actually the East High Ring of Honor Ceremony as well. So a couple of different things at both high schools this week that are that I'm looking forward to that um just the sense, I again, just being at the East High Hall of Fame last week and going to some of the West High stuff and and really all the different schools, just the amount of pride that I've seen has just really made me excited and motivated me. You know, just like some great things going on, some great alumni. And one thing I'm gonna say is that we're really gonna work on, and Acme and I have talked about this, continuing.
continuing to recognize alumni, district alumni. We're starting to do more and more of it. Just recognize, you know, there's some, a lot of these students who have done some amazing things with their careers. So continuing to recognize that is gonna be a focus of ours going forward.
Sounds good. All right. Information from board members. I will start to my left. Director Mills, do you have any comments for tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Director Knight, what do you have?
I'll just echo something I've probably said in the past a little bit, you know, is, you know, if I can tell anything to our parents, middle school, high school is, you know, really digging into the classes that your kids need for whatever their careers want to be. And Macy might is who would always be thinking middle school, but it's not. You need to be looking there because it could, you know, impact your pathway in high school if you haven't set yourself upright, in the same way in high school, if you're not looking ahead. And you know, you gotta go see a counselor, you go, you know, call somebody, look at websites, whatever, but get ahead on what you need because sometimes it'd be just a trivial class that kind of keeps you from making your, your end goal, so.
Definitely. All right. Director Williams?
Uh, just two things. One, when we get the enrollment numbers, I would like to see, um, numbers for building as well. See where we are for, for building. And then, when we're talking about facilities, and I know a lot of things are out of our control as far as timing, but I think in this last cycle, when we were talking about the West High Gym and the weight rooms, and we're in a, being the beginning of school and, and our students are back in the building and strength and conditioning and athletics, maybe think about when we approve for, for facility purposes, just making sure we have enough time just for, you know, situations to come up and, and just giving ourselves a little bit of leeway, making sure that we're not disrupting students and athletics or anything like that, displacing our, our students, so.
Education too, right? PE, you know, it's really about education too, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I mentioned that, strength and conditioning is a, is a class. But just, you know, thinking about that, making sure there's enough time. That's all I have.
All right, Director Smith?
I do, a couple more things. So thank you to the summer school staff, and then also thank you to the young lady that came and spoke about the dress code. Make sure you fill out the dress code survey. It's still open. Not sure how long we extended it, but-
Everybody's getting it, please, too.
Yep. So check your emails. If you haven't received it, make sure you reach out, so we can get that out to you, make sure everybody fill it out. Thank you.
All right. Director Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, under Scharr, what I asked her, said construction schedules aren't as reliable as they used to be, and we just need to recognize that when we, when we schedule projects. Other than that, just if you have kids and you haven't sent them to school yet, send them tomorrow. Would be a good day to start. And if there are kids in your neighborhood that are wandering around during school hours, find out what's going on and make a referral, because we really need those kids in, in our schools, and they need to be in our schools, so. That's it.
Excellent. I, I will go ahead and echo Mr. Williams. Please fill out the survey if you have not received it and your friend did. Go ahead and pour it on if possible. We need your feedback. I'm looking forward to seeing and hearing the feedback beginning next Tuesday, right? That committee. We need to hear what you have to say. And I'm very appreciative of those who have come to the school board and said their words and their opinions, and so I know that's very important for a lot of people in the community, so my kudos to that young lady who came tonight. She did very well, so. Our next board meeting will be held September twenty-sixth at five PM, same room, same building. And West High, again, they have homecoming this weekend, or this week, and homecoming day, and then East is next week? Fall week, excuse me. September thirtieth, the week of September thirtieth, so, yes. A lot of things going on, so. With that said, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All right, thank you very much. Good night.
You guys.
Oh, you gotta vote, voting part, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you.